It's seven, actually it's a couple of minutes after seven and the League prides itself on starting on time and trying to end on time. And all the way through our evening, our timers are going to be making sure that we stick to our hearts. Welcome you all for being here and thanks to the North Olympic Library System for co-sponsoring this forum and enabling us to use this space. I also want to thank the members of the League's Voter Service Committee for their efforts in organizing the event. My name is Vicky Rudin. I'm a member of the League of Women Voters and I'll be your moderator, obviously. The League of Women Voters is a 98-year-old national nonpartisan political organization whose purpose is to encourage local citizens to register to vote, become well-informed voters, and participate in all levels of government. The League does not support or oppose candidates, factions, or political parties. The views expressed here tonight are those of the candidates and not of the sponsors of the debate. The League, however, does act in support of or opposition to selected governmental issues which its members have studied. You can find more information about the League on the membership table. It's over there on the side. And our website is indicated on the agenda that you received when you came in. Is there anybody who didn't get an agenda? It's the League's practice to hold forums only for primary races where there are three or more candidates. Under Washington State's top-two primary system, the top two vote-getters in each of the primary races will advance to the November 6th general election ballot. We'll be following that agenda that I just referred to. And on our panel this evening are the three candidates for Clallum County Commissioner, District 3. Our format will be as follows. The candidates will make brief opening statements. Next, we'll take questions from you, the audience. And then the candidates will make their closing statements. We hope you'll be thinking of the questions you want to ask the candidates as you listen to their opening statements. If you need a card to write on, hold up your hand and a League member will provide one. Anyone need anything? Agenda, card, pencil? Okay. Can you all hear okay? All right. If at any time, since we're not being, using a microphone, please raise your hand at any time if you can't hear what someone is saying, although I doubt that in case they're all pretty forceful. Before we begin, let's deal with a few important matters. Please turn off your cell phones and devices that make noise. Also, a word about video recording. No non-league audio or video recording devices of any kind are permitted during this forum unless prior permission has been received. As you can see, the League is recording the forum and the video will be posted on the League's website. And again, the League's website address is on your agenda. We also tonight have a representative from Twilight Radio, Forks Radio Station, 96.7 FM. Ken Labberte is here. He'll be recording the candidate's statements and some of your questions perhaps and their responses. So turn on that radio station in the coming day or two and hear it again. To make the most of our time, I ask you to kindly refrain from applauding or making any other noises which in any way interrupt our speakers. I'll be sure to give you a chance before we adjourn to give a round of applause to candidates. League members wearing name tags are located around the room, so if you need any assistance, they will be here to help you. Our timers this evening are Penny Van Bleet and Judith Parker. They're right up here. They'll be holding up signs. Their job is to make sure that we stay within our time limits that has been established for each segment of our forum. Now, let me tell you about Commissioner District 3. The Board of Clallum County Commissioners consists of three members. Each is elected solely by voters living within that Commissioner's district. District 3 runs roughly from Valley Creek in Port Angeles to the county's western boundary. It's actually a map behind our camera person that shows the county's districts. According to the Clallum County Charter, the Board is responsible for the legislative functions and most executive functions of county government, including strategic planning, determining priorities, setting policies, establishing budgets, and serving on regional and statewide boards and committees. The Commissioner's term is four years. The position is partisan and the annual salary in 2019 will be $86,286. There are three candidates before you this evening. Bill Peach, Howard Mike Doherty, and Dale Wilson. Each candidate, in the order they filed for office, will be given up to two minutes for their opening remarks. We've asked the candidates to introduce themselves by covering the following information. What are your qualifications for serving as County Commissioner? How do you intend to address the major challenges facing Clallum County? And what are your goals for the first year of this term of office? Okay? We will begin with Bill Peach. Two minutes.
Thanks very much for the opportunity to speak with you. First, let me begin by saying I thank you for the privilege of serving as your County Commissioner. The fact of the matter is, it's been a while since we had the opportunity--
Louder.
Louder. We've had the opportunity for someone that lives in the West End, that understands the issues that the West End faces, help address West End issues. My qualifications are the, I've spent some time in the Army. I've got a civil engineering degree, forest engineering degree, and MBA. Came to Forks 36 years ago, right after college. Had a chance to serve a number of organizations as a volunteer. I worked at Rainier, managed 200,000 acres of timberland. When I retired after 27 years, then went to work with the Quillie Tribe as their executive director and then as a County Commissioner. Some of the things that I'd like you to make sure that you remember, the challenges that we're facing here in the West End, taxes. And I've been very, very clear that I do not appreciate any increases in taxes. In fact, I was successful decreasing sales tax for the first time in Washington State's history. The other things I'll share with you is that I've been adamant about supporting the local pool and hope that a lot of people have the opportunity to visit that. Some of the things that we've got in front of us, I'll just refer you to my website. If you'd be kind enough to jot down Bill Peach for County Commissioner. I've got four different items that I consider to be our challenges in the future. And the way we're going to solve those is by working together. The old days of, "Here is your answer. Do it my way," are gone. What we need is collaboration. And that's one of the things that I really feel that we have done well at the television.
Next, let's hear from Mike Doherty.
So, thanks to League of Women Voters for putting on tonight's event. I'd like to introduce my wife, Jase. This lady, 50 years, married in '48. And she's kind of the brains behind my campaign. She produced this little card and it pretty much tells you where our website is, mike doherty.info. And then this little item, if you pick this up, it tells you a little bit about a couple of the issues that the League asked about. So, the budget, for instance, talks about the periods that I was in office. And we were only one of two counties in the state of Washington that did not go into debt service, that had to help the reserve in both the road fund and the general fund. And then hopefully your questions may get into that. Because having that reserve was very important for getting outside federal and state grants because we actually were one of the few counties that had local matches. So, when it came to building the Owa Bridge, we needed funding and a lot of other projects. And on the back of this sheet, it tells you a little bit about leadership positions that I've held when I was a County Commissioner. So, for instance, five county group commissioners from those five counties elected to be chairman over a decade on one board. Another decade for the RCND, Resource Conservation Development Group. It had a number of grants, several 15,000, $20,000 grants and up to $1.6 million, which was a NASA-approved concept grant. And I happened to be the principal investigator of that. And we had a little bit of money left and we put that money into a wildfire study, which I brought along with me tonight, but it projects the catastrophic damage that could occur on Olympic Peninsula as a result of wildfire as climate change causes some drying of the forests. A number of other things are listed where I represented all counties in Washington in areas such as the broadband committee, the state environment, a number of environmental areas, drug treatment task force, the criminal justice treatment account panel that handles the treatment money, drug task force, drug courts, where Commissioners had elected me to represent these other counties around the state. So, I think I had good trust, which should be a leadership skill among anybody that's a County Commissioner, I believe. Thanks.
Thank you. And our third candidate is Dale Wilson.
Thank you. Two minutes sure seems a lot longer when somebody else is talking. I would like to thank the League of Women Voters for doing this year after year after year. It really means a lot to the candidates, but also it means a lot to the community to be able to get out and meet the candidates and ask questions and see what's going on. I'd like to thank Rob Fleck for that generous introduction you gave me at the Fourth of July parade. Thank you very much. A little bit about me. As you can probably tell already, I talk differently. I'm from the South. I grew up in Mississippi and Tennessee. I graduated University of Tennessee and then I did my master's degree in organizational development in Murray State University. In that master's program, I studied and actually got some experience in team building. We learned about leadership. We learned about motivation. We learned how to spot leaders and nurture them and bring them on toward higher and better positions within different companies. My first-year goals is, thank you, I want to meet all the business leaders in all the communities here in the 3rd District. I've met a lot of them. As you may know, I was a reporter and published the Protocol News for five years. By the way, if you get a little warm, this hand fan over here is great. And also, it has the website for the Protocol News, which has every story and every opinion I ever put out on it. And also, there's popamonline.tv is the television station, public access television station. And I have a public affairs show on it that will show you that I'm up on the issues. I'll have to go quickly through this. One of the first things I want to do is to try to develop a situation where the County Commission meetings can be live-streamed. Every meeting can be live-streamed to the libraries in the outlying areas so that everybody in the county can go to their local library and be able to take part in the County Commission meetings, even up to and including the three-minute comment period. And when you do make your comments, whether on Skype or another means, then they will be a part of the record.
Thank you. Next, we will take as many questions as possible from you, the audience. I'd like you, if you have a question to ask, that you stand and state your name and specify whom your question is for. You'll have up to 30 seconds to ask your question. Our timers will hold up the stop sign if you use up that time. And candidates will have one minute to answer each question. So, please consider this time limit when you're crafting your question. It may help you stay within your 30 seconds if you write your question out beforehand and then read it when it is your turn. If you are unable for some reason to ask your own question, give your written question to one of our members and it will be read aloud by a League member for you. The candidates, as I said, have up to one minute to answer each question. All candidates will have an opportunity to respond to all questions, however, even those directed to just one of them. I will then give each candidate the opportunity to respond to or rebut their fellow candidate's answers. They'll be given up to 30 seconds for that brief response or rebuttal. Or if they wish, they may waive their chance to respond, meaning we can get on to more questions. We planned that there would be approximately 30 minutes for audience questions and candidate responses, but that's just an estimate. You'll see how it goes. And please keep in mind that we'll give everyone in the audience the chance to ask a question before taking follow-ups or multiple questions from the same person. If we run out of time before you get your question asked and answered, we encourage the candidates to hang around after the forum so you can talk to them one-on-one. While you're preparing your questions, I'll kick off this part of our forum with the first question. And this is for all three candidates. But we'll start with the order in which they give their initial statements. The question is, "How serious a problem do you think climate change poses for our county?" Bill?
I think it is serious that some people believe they can control it, when in fact it's occurring. Now, the work that I've done to take a look at the impact here in the West End says that, especially in the case of wetlands changes, we've got the mountains that are going to have a physical barrier to an awful lot of the change that's occurring. With regard to sea level changes, Clallum County is actually pivoting. And the West End is actually rising, whereas the area that's near Squim is lowering. So, I do believe that it is a real phenomenon, but I do not believe that it is man-made.
Mike?
I tend to believe the opposite. The governor has appointed, two different governors appointed me to statewide committees to study this. A third committee, the Association of Counties, again, my peers, County Commissioners across the state, appointed me to represent counties on the committee. So, I followed it since I was in office and out of office. I'm on three or four groups in Port Townsend and they're very active on climate change. One group studying adaptation measures their community, Jefferson, Port Townsend can cover. Mitigation, believing strongly that it's partially human-caused. And even the oil companies now are saying that. And they're publicly saying that, trying to cut their liability. So, I've stayed aware of most of the major issues, strongly believe, yes, it is happening. As I referenced, in a grant from NASA, we put out a study with some money that was left from the initial grant. So, it's a wildfire hazard assessment. And this says, basically at the bottom line, the fifth most at-risk county for catastrophic loss due to climate change and wildfire is Clallum County. And they have monetary amounts attached to it. So, you're welcome to look through this.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Dale?
Thank you. It was about 25 years ago, one of the major oil companies, I can't remember which one, published a study and then quickly drew it back in, that said 25 years ago that climate change was real and it was caused by the burning of fossil fuels. You know, it's going to be very little that a community like Forks or even a county like Clallum can do, but we can have influence on those people that can have some influence on what this is doing. As you may know, Volvo has already decided they're not going to build an internal combustion engine after 2020. There are what we used to call 16-wheeler trucks that operate off of a fuel cell. And when you buy one, you get the first million miles free of fuel. Because they realize that the fossil fuel is causing and it needs to be reduced and eliminated sooner rather than later. And I might also add, a lot of these oil companies are already greatly involved in fuel cell technology and solar technology. So, they know what's up.
Thank you. Do any of you wish to add further comments? You've got 30 seconds.
I do believe that there are some things that we should consider in terms of climate change, and they include activities we're already involved in. Noxious weeds. Think about it. If there's an increase in temperature, are we going to see an increase in the plants that are causing a problem in our streams for our salmon? And I also believe in managing channel migration zones. I hope someone asks me a question about that. I'm very much involved in that process and the shoreline management plan.
So, again, climate change is happening. It's basically, a lot of it's human-caused. And there are major impacts for Clallum County. Probably by 2030, 2040, a little after, there's going to be serious impacts on the beaches at Three Crabs, down around the Squim Bay area. And that's the highest-priced real estate in Clallum County. People have their whole estates invested in some of those beach houses. So, it's a big item and the current Board isn't wanting to hold public meetings to let the science involved be displayed to the public. And I think it will cause a great concern. So, they're tending to avoid it and they should be candid about it.
Dan?
Thank you. I'm sure most of you already know that most of the tribes are doing all they can to move their villages and their civic offices and things up to higher ground because so many of them are at sea level. And they know that it's a threat that they've got to deal with. The more we can beat the drum for sensible use of energy and getting a sensible source of energy, the better. And there's no reason we can't be leaders in something like this, either with fuel cell technology or solar technology.
Okay. Audience, questions? Just please stand and I'll point at you. Thank you. Come on. Your name, please?
Mark Lamb. And I'd like to, I guess, ask Mr. Bill Peach and he knows can respond. We had several years ago, Navy come to town and explain what they're going to be doing up here with the electronic warfare testing for the planes coming out with the island. It appears those planes are providing increasing amount of noise here on the West End. And what can the County Commissioners Office do to help mitigate that noise and the economic impact that I believe it has on the tourism and general welfare of life? Thank you.
Did have a chance to talk to people from the Navy. Actually, my brother just retired from Navy at Woodby Island, so he helped connect me with some public relations--
A little louder, please.
With some public relations people. What you can do is, as soon as you see or hear those jets and you know they're actually making too much noise, they're flying too low, is report it. Document when that occurred and report it. Because the issue is that some of the cowboys get a little rambunctious and from time to time, they need some feedback. And that's literally what occurs.
You know, since I bought my property out here on the West End, I've become a lot more aware of the jet noise. And I lived close to a naval air station there in Memphis, and they had a naval air station there. So, I love the technology. I don't like it intruding on the peacefulness that you're trying to enjoy. As much as this part of the community, I mean, all of Clallum County, but especially this part of the community is dependent upon tourism and people that like to get outdoors, we need to find some way for the County Commission, the CDC's here, to make some kind of noise at the Navy. Whether it'll do any good, I don't know. The Navy is big.
So, as far as I know, the Board of Commissioners has taken no action on this. And Bill can talk about it, but doesn't take action on a lot of things. The existing practice is to practice over in Idaho. There are several other sites, Eastern Washington, Eastern Oregon, one site in California, that could be alternatives. And I don't think they've been studied adequately. That's one thing that the Board could have taken a position, could have gone to the public meetings. There were several of those. I've been to one in Port Townsend, I've been to one on Woodby Island. Trying to just get more information out to the public and about these alternatives. And I think the Navy may be liable to a lawsuit because they didn't study the alternatives, obviously, enough.
Okay. Each of you has 30 seconds if you want to add further comments on this question.
I'm a vet. I like the sound of those jets. It's the sound of freedom. But there still is a responsibility of the person that's piloting that jet to respect hours of operation.
Well, I'm a vet too. I was in a self-boat coxswain. The fact that I was a rescue coxswain on an LCM for an entire fibra on a ship. So, you know, I'm proud of my service in the Navy, but I've spoken up against the Navy and asked for more information for the public on this issue. And I think they owe the public. And since there are these other alternatives, they don't have to pick the wilderness of the Olympics. Those pilots don't have a lot of choice. Part of their drill is to fly lower, contact those electromagnetic relight stations as part of the project that they're going to be engaged in. So, I think they should be more honest with the public and--
Dale, did you want to add another 30 seconds?
Yes. Some of you may remember about three years ago, when there was an incident with the Navy, had a helicopter, or several helicopters that were flying very low over Port Angeles and really startled a lot of people. Well, a little 98-pound Sherry kid, who was mayor at the time, went over and took a meeting with the commandant and it quit. So, why can't we try something like that? Get the mayors and the county commissioners together and either write a letter en masse or go in and attend the meeting en masse and then go every month until you get some kind of relief.
Next question. Stan, give your name?
My name's Richard Cahill. I reside at 162 Hillsford Road. And I was stationed at NAS Millington, Memphis, Tennessee during the Vietnam War. And I'd like to echo Commissioner's Peach sentiment. All too often, we take our freedoms--
What is your question?
What? I'll get to the question in a minute.
No, you only have 30 seconds to answer that question.
We take our freedoms for granted and I think it's important to consider that during the course of that decision. So, I'd like Mr. Wilson to comment on that some more.
I don't think I understand the question.
Do you understand? Do you understand the fact that those jets are up there to protect our freedoms?
Yes, sir.
And sometimes they create noise and that can be mitigated in some circumstances. But those aircraft are designated for combat performance and sometimes they have to fly a low level.
Do you appreciate the fact that this is a World Heritage Site that they're flying over?
I know that better than you. I've lived here for 69 years.
We are not having a debate. You ask a question and they answer. If you wish to interact, the time for that is after the forum.
Sure.
Thank you.
And as Mike said, they have millions of other acres that are not over heritage sites and that are not over communities that are so dependent on tourist and outdoor-type tourists. And for that reason, yes, I love the jets too. And I've got, my mom owns three American flags presented to her by Grateful Nation. So, it's not like I'm anti-military. I am up for the best we can get for our county. And a lot of that is dependent on visitors who come here to enjoy the peace and solitude of the outdoors. They have millions of acres that they can operate. They don't have to do it over the national park.
Bill or Mike, do you wish to answer this question?
Just real briefly, the representatives from the Navy have met those County Commissioners. Okay? And then also, I know that some of them have been in Forks. And again, what they're looking for is the frequency of people that are not, pilots that are not following the rules they're supposed to. And they're looking for how many people actually understand what you do when you observe this. Okay?
Mike, did you wish to answer this?
I understand both points of view, but I think it's important in our system to have looked at all the alternatives. And the community in Idaho that has been the subject of these drills for a decade or more wants them to stay there. And the Navy, I think, could stay there and not have to put in the sort of nuisance value here. And a very costly new experiment with these trucks up Forest Service roads, making the contacts with the planes. New expense, new experiment when an existing community is glad to host them. Again, I served in the Navy.
On to another topic. Is there another question? Come on. We came all the way out here to hear you.
Ken Labberte. Main job of the Commissioner is running the budgets and watching for budgets. How we got to deal with keeping the budget in line, watching for fraud, watching for abuse, watching for wasted items? Simple.
Okay. Let's have Mike answer this one first.
So, again, the Board of Commissioners, Mr. Therenger, Mr. Chapman, and myself had this sizable reserve in the middle of a recession in the Navy. And so, not only did we have the reserve, but we actually expanded and saved some programs for the West End. There were challenges to the court, the 3rd District detachment, Health and Human Services, but we were able to save those and in fact, enhance some services. And then again, the reserve helped get outside money, that's your tax money that went to Washington, went to Olympia, and get more of that-- Washington, went to Olympia, and get more of that back for our community, so it paid off as far as managing the budget. And I was picked by Governor Gregoire as the only elected official in the state to be on her State Budget Transformation Committee. We toured the state, getting suggestions on how to make the state budget more public, manage the money better, and again, I was asked by my peers also to participate that and be a voice for rural Washington as far as the state's budget.
Dale, would you take this one next?
Yes, thank you. The budget is a dynamic document, and it's, when it's filled out, they know it's going to be changed, but where a lot of the spending, and especially the wasteful, and I would almost say fraudulent, spending comes is when they do these budget emergencies, and they seem like they have a budget emergency every two or three meetings, and these budget emergencies are those things that the taxpayers don't have a lot of time to read up on and to study up on, but they'll shovel more money out the door for these budget emergencies than you can imagine, and it's because the watchful eye of the press is not there, or not enough of the watchful eye of the press is there, so they do these budget emergencies, and they give things to you like this million dollars that they gave to the pickleball paddle idiocy that they're doing over at the port. They had a $900,000 grant, and they advertised a hearing so that all the taxpayers could come and give their testimony on what they thought of this $900,000 grant, but 16 different documents came out of the courthouse falsely stating what that grant was for. Even the ad that went to the newspaper, the legal notice of what the grant was for was listed wrongly, and when I asked our commissioner, what do you think about these 16 different incorrect documents, and he said it was a stenographer's error.
Thank you. Bill?
I appreciate the fact that we have a reserve, and I'd remind you how that was developed. That's timber money. Now, it's proper that that was managed carefully, and I give credit to all of the commissioners before me. They did a good job. They really did. The answer to your question is through transparency. You can go onto our website, and you can look at any cost center and any spending on any month yourself. It's not a public records request. You can answer the question. You can come to a meeting and say, what's going on with this?
No, he has a full minute.
I thought this was a rebuttal.
No.
One more minute?
No. Half a minute.
One more half a minute. The fact of the matter is, we need to increase our focus on cash flow, and in the past, techniques such as, you know, about 80% of our costs are in people, and this decision to cut hours in the staff, okay, without really studying what our alternatives are, where is our cash going, why are we seeing a change between what we have budgeted and what we are actually doing? That is the work that we need to increase. You know, I wasn't in office when there was an embezzlement, but I'll tell you something. There is a need for us to constantly challenge the system, and that's one of the things that you see occurring right now with what the commissioners want to do in the finance department, is they want to answer the question, why, not what. Why is this department's spending different?
Do either of you wish to add another 30 seconds in the discussion about budget?
Well, I'd like to respond to Commissioner Peach's remarks about the brand-new department that the county wants to create with its own budget, with its own chief financial officer, with his staff, and what this is actually going to do is take away the statutory officers and the constitutional officers that are on that finance committee, get them out of the way so that all of the budget will be under one department, and that'll be under the board of county commissioners. Even if I'm sitting on that board of commissioners, I think that's too much power from one agency. It needs to remain spread out with the auditor and the treasurer, as it is now and as it is in our charter.
Mike or Bill, you wish to?
So I would say the incumbent is incorrect as far as where that money came from. It wasn't all timber money. Some of it was, but the timber money is distributed a different way into junior taxing districts and other worthy entities. The other, the actual excess, now called the reserve, came from other funds, including outside money against state and federal money that we could have access to, and partially because we had to help the reserve in both the general fund and the road fund, and other counties didn't. We could access that money, they didn't have a local match to get those grants that we did.
Bill?
I urge you to read the records request that you just submitted, Dale, and then maybe sit with somebody that does understand finance. It's apparent to me that that will help you quite a bit, and it's not simple. It really is, Dale, and I can see why it would be a bit of a confusion for you, but your request came through the system today, and it'll be responded to in a short period of time, and as much as we can, we're going to answer those questions.
Okay. Question from the audience on a new topic?
I just would like a clarification. Mr. Peach, talking about climate change, you said you had a problem with people who feel that they can control it. I would like to know, are you saying that there's nothing that can be done to mitigate it?
No, in fact, I believe strongly in resiliency, and I do believe that we ought to begin with existing programs, such as what we're doing to manage noxious weeds, manage activity inside of a channel migration zone, and one project that I've taken a hard look at is FEMA's maps that identify where flood zones are should be used if there's an increase in the height of where flooding is possible. Sea level rises, for us to take a look at rules we can apply in those areas that give the landowner a decrease in their insurance costs. It's a program that has been successful on the East Coast, and I'm waiting for information about changes on the sea level from the FEMA maps. That's a source that I will believe in, and I'm saying that responding to that is something that we, as a community, can get involved in. It's a tangible reality that I do believe that we can deal with.
I'd say that the science is very clear. Certified scientists that study this area, 97, 98% agree. It's a little behind the curve to now say, as Bill has said, that the science is unclear. It's just simply clear. Then who caused it, that's a little less clear, but the American major oil companies are now admitting, trying to cut their own liability in the future, that they helped cause it, and the burning of fossil fuel is the main contributor. In Washington State, it's 48% of our greenhouse gases are combustion engines created, so it's very, science is clear, they have caused it, and to say that noxious weeds and other things are important, it's not that important compared to the bigger issues like water supply in the East End. Sea level rise, which will ruin not only things like the housing in Three Crabs, Dungeon House, but it's also going to ruin salmon habitat, it's going to ruin shellfish industry, and we're going to have some liability to treaty tribes because of the ruination of their treaty tribe rights. So there's a chain of things, and if you read Michael Bloomberg's books, two books, you'll see there's a good business case, and the longer we postpone addressing it, billions of dollars are going to be the cost to the public to mitigate and adapt.
Thank you. Dale?
I'm just reminded by, I don't remember who this quote should be credited, but it's very difficult to make someone understand something when their income depends on them not understanding it.
Shall we go on to another question?
I'd like to read that.
Yeah. Go ahead.
One eighty, Wiesnfelds, 941 K Street. This is a small issue in the big picture, but we have a real hard time out on the West End in the county of getting any animal control. We pay the same taxes they do in Squim and Port Angeles for it, and we get virtually no service whatsoever, so it's been an issue for years and years and years. We brought it up to the commissioners before, and we're going to bring it up again in August, the Friends of Forks Animals, but I would just like to know if you have any ideas or thoughts on the subject.
Dale, will you take this one first?
Is this wild animals or domestic animals running loose and that sort of thing? That's probably more under the purview of the sheriff, but, and I'm not sure, but I bet there's ordinances already on the books against it, and so it's just going to be a matter of getting the sheriff to enforce the law, and, you know, the county commissioners have some impact on his budget, but I don't think that would be something that they'd say, you need to start getting a dog catcher, or we're going to lessen your budget, so I think you're just going to have to lean on the sheriff, and this is a great time because he's up for election and he's got to challenge him.
Mike?
There were several times that I met with the West End, were principally involved in this, and worked out an agreement with the sheriff to expand the budget a bit to cover the control officers coming out to the West End, and it was a stretch to figure out, among other priorities, how to do this. So for a while, at least, it was much more on the radar, and I don't know if the commissioners have actually been talking to the sheriff about this. If it's gone a little backwards, then maybe they're not putting enough money or enough pressure on the sheriff to do that. You could also work in, the City of Forks helped because of their holding area out at the airport, and I don't know whether they still have that, but it gave some protection to the sheriff's office. If they had emergency calls and they needed to put an animal, you know, in a controlled setting, so they could go do some other things, then come back, and so cooperating with Forks helped solve that at least four or five years ago. I don't know how it's going now, but I'd try to look into it. Glad to meet with your group.
Let me add one more thing on my top.
You can, when we get to the bottom of it, okay? Dale?
I'm looking forward to the meeting. We've got scheduled August 1st, and I like the fact that we're going to have the meeting with just the folks here in town.
A little louder, please.
No buffers. I think that's part of the issue, and the expectations aren't being met. It is time for that to be clearly revealed and bluntly share that fact through the chain of command. That's one of the issues that I do see. I've seen a number of issues dealing with compliance on code. I went to one person's house, and there were, you know, like 20 or 30 dogs inside the house, and all kinds of animals running around outside and neutered, and it was the person next door was totally fed up with the rats. That kind of issue has been kind of pushed off as too tough to handle, and I don't think that's right at all. You know, think about the potential for disease, all kinds of things. So I'm more aggressively addressing those issues. When I get a call, I don't just turn it over to code compliance. I follow those.
Dale, 30 seconds?
I would just like to make you aware of an outfit that is about four years old now in Port Angeles. It's called Pet Possession, and it was started by Miss Van Cleve, and they do a great job. They have reunited, I think, 2,000 pets with their owners, and if something like that could be started here, it might be a stopgap solution until you can get more attention from the sheriff's office.
Mike, did you want to add anything further? 30 seconds?
No, if elected, I would be glad to meet with the group, go back and talk to the sheriff, and maybe adjust the budget a little bit. If it's encouraging nonprofits to step up and do a little more, I'd be glad to work on that. Again, I'm grateful to City Forks because they were part of the solution.
Dale, anything further?
It is important that we honestly address it. It is a funding issue, but there's also a performance issue, and I want to sort that out. I'm not afraid to sit to the performance of a county employee and then report to the chain of command and the personnel department.
Another question?
Don't let them ask this easy.
No, no. You look like you want to ask something.
I do, but I'm not sure if this is a county commissioner issue or other issue, but my name is Colleen Larson, and I live on the Solder River. My question concerns garbage, litter, and recycling, and why there isn't better options, management. When I was growing up, there were fines for littering. You never see those signs, and the amount of garbage that's left on the sides of the roads is disgusting for a tourist area.
Mike, let's have you take this first.
So you're forecasting a bigger issue than maybe most people know. The influence of China on the solid waste stream of America is huge. County commissioners, as far as I know, are not addressing it. They have a couple of employees who personally would like to do more. They're nonprofits, particularly around again, a couple others who would recycle those things that go into the waste stream. Right now, we all subsidize carting usable lawn mowers, bicycles, Tonka toys out of the area at a very high cost, and the type of trucks they use are among the worst of greenhouse gas emissions. So we have to recycle and upcycle, and there's a number of people who are going to invest in the upcycling side, so you're going to be asked to reuse, recycle, upcycle, but you're also probably going to be asked to pay a surcharge, like you are power. That's another issue we should talk about, but for solid waste, they're going to have to handle it somehow, and we're going to be in servitude to China, cleaning up our garbage more, recycling more, so China will take that garbage and process it like they used to.
Dale?
Recently, the decision with regard to recycling focused on one issue only, and that was these plastic bags, all right? Now, I watched that, and I couldn't believe that the real issue was, what do I do with my glass when I take it up here to the transfer station? Nothing. And the same things for my newspapers and my magazines, and I've got a bunch of people sitting around crying about a token activity associated with plastic bags. My issue is that I think it's great, that we've got a system in place that helps us increase what we are doing, but there needs to be some reality and some focus, and that's what I intend to provide. I mean, the reality is that there's some bigger issues, and I hope that we're able to sensibly address some of those issues. I agree with you. I think it's an absolute crime, okay? I wish it was a little more liberal with regard to the penalties that the individual that decides to litter actually incurred, you know, and maybe that's a starting point.
Dale?
Thank you. Colleen, where you're seeing the litter now, of course, I don't know where you travel, but-
101, between Forks and Port Angeles.
Right, I'm glad you said that, because if you ever read the, some of the accounts in the paper where the sheriff's chain gang goes off to some of these forest roads, and it's amazing what they pick up out there now. Here's part of the reason for that. Port Angeles has the highest tipping fees of any recycling place, at least in the Northwest, and when they started raising those fees, I was the first one to go down and tell them. I said, look, guys, all of this, all of this trash is going to wind up in the woods if you keep raising these fees. It's $175 a ton now, and that's nuts, but I don't know what the alternative is unless we start another one over here, and maybe Forks can compete, have their own recycle, well, I know they've got a great one out here on the West Side, but those guys make a lot of money by recycling some of that stuff. When I take my stuff out there, they'll have you put the metal over here, cardboard over here, the pallets over here, and I don't mind that. I don't mind at all, especially because I know it's going to be reused.
Further comments on this issue from any of you?
Well, part of the solution, I think, has to be a regional approach, that you consolidate the waste, and not just at the Port Angeles Transfer Station, but across the peninsula, and there might be a costly segregation issue, where, remember in the old days, we used separation of source. We may have to do part of that, because part of the problem with the export to China is it's contaminated in various ways, so we've got to address that. There are two groups in Port Townsend that I'm connected with. One is Beyond Waste, another is a group of young entrepreneurs who have purchased a machine that will pull out valuable chemicals out of plastics, and they can make money with that. Port Angeles should have done that at the transfer site 15 years ago when this technology was available. They should allow lawn mowers, bicycles to be collected by local dads, moms who want to fix those up for kids.
Okay. Dale or Bill? 30 seconds on this?
I'll take 10, because Mike's so passionate. The answer's the economics. Watch for the opportunity for us to take our waste material, our garbage via a barge, not a truck, to someplace in Seattle that transfers it. That's our opportunity, and think about how many trucks come to, as an example, to Safeway stores every day. So we've got an inbound and outbound. It's just a matter of time before we get to critical mass.
Dale?
I have nothing to add, thank you.
We're getting close to the 30 minutes that I said we would use for questions, but I would welcome a final question from someone. No?
Something that Mike brought up in a meeting before you was homelessness and drug problem in the county. There was issues to do about that.
Let's have Dale start this one.
These are our brothers, sons, daughters, children. I got an interesting factoid from Serenity House- I got an interesting factoid from Serenity House. Eighty-five percent of their residents and their clients were born in Clallum County. But right now, the overall attitude is to just see if we can move them on down the road. And the merchants complain, and I don't blame them. We're going to have to take this seriously, because we can't push them down the road. There's nowhere else for them to go. And yes, drugs are a lot of the problem. But the biggest problem is, is the hopelessness that comes with joblessness. Most of those people that I know and I have met and I have talked to and interviewed that are homeless, they had jobs. They had good jobs. They had homes. They bought a new car, not a new car, but they bought a car every two or three years. Those jobs went away, and we didn't replace those jobs. We've had an Economic Development Council, they've been there for thirty-five years, supposed to bring the jobs here, and after thirty-five years, the average income for individuals is still at minimum wage, nineteen thousand dollars a year for the county. That's the problem.
So homelessness has been a concern of mine for a long time. I was raised in Clallum County, educated, employed here, and I know a lot of people who are on the streets. As a county commissioner, I worked on a state committee. I got to know Senator Mark Malosian personally, and he's kind of the Mother Teresa of homelessness. I testified in favor of the two recording fees that puts money into homelessness, and it's competitive in our county, the way we distribute it. So I've been involved, I've testified in the Senate and the House on this matter. The times those funds were threatened, I was one of the few people representing all the counties in the state to save that money, and we were able to save it. So the board has done a pretty good job, I think, in distributing it in a very fair process. On drugs, again, my peers, other county commissioners, appointed me to represent all the counties on the criminal justice treatment account panel. That's the money for treating drugs. I was on the committee that set up, did the planning for drug courts, and then on the committee representing all the counties again, established the drug courts. Judge Williams, as you know, in our court was a saint in setting those up, and I helped work with Judge Williams on that.
Dale?
Important issues, and they're actually very definitely related to each other. There's no silver bullet. Mike would have pulled the trigger on it long ago if there was a single solution that would take care of this. It is a matter of a number of different approaches. One of them, the swimming pool that we have, is an opportunity for youth to make contact and potentially communicate with role models, rather than sit on the corner and talk about the best drug available today, and its costs. One thing that I do believe in is that people that want to change should be given an opportunity. So I'm very active right now with Drug Court. The issue that I'm trying to manage as a person gets treatment comes back to Port Angeles, kicked off at the bus at O'Dark thirty. How long does it take that person to end up doing what they were doing? Why don't we provide a place for that person to stay? Why don't we give that person at least a period of time where they can really think through what their needs are? And you know what? Especially if it's a woman that has children.
Each of you has thirty seconds for more on this subject. Go ahead, Dale.
Some of you may have read in the paper where three of the shelters at the Serenity House have closed in the last month or six weeks. And it's because of lack of funding. Now, one was a family shelter, one was a shelter where they actually had drug counselors and drug testing, and a very active twelve-step program. There are mental health issues, and they had a mental health counselor dealing with that. As you may not know, and you won't know.
But you can talk with them after.
It's a sad story, and I'm glad I didn't get to tell it. I'll tell it then. One of these, one of these young men who had been staying at one of these shelters that just closed, had some mental issues, and they had some very low-level mental health counseling there. Well, they set that all of a sudden, and he had nowhere to go. He somehow found his way over to Jefferson County, went downtown, got in a row with a fellow on the street over there, and stabbed him in the head. So these shelters are worth our time, our energy, our effort, and our money.
What is the money that they ran out of? Where were they being funded?
Well, the commissioners don't seem to think that it's enough to, enough importance to fund these shelters in the way that they can actually do the work that they're supposed to be doing. You can't have them open and close and open and close, because these people, as unstable as they are, they've got to have something that they can depend on. And a roof over your head is very, mental health counseling is even better.
Mike?
So I'd agree to nearly all of Dale's comments, but also, something that I would work on if I'm elected is the idea, somewhat similar like Habitat does for sweat equity and eventually owning a house. On the west side of Port Angeles, sometimes there is a forks, there are abandoned homes. Once they're abandoned a short period and the utilities are turned off, you've got mildew in the wallboard, and it becomes much more expensive to rehab that house. So Port Angeles School District used to have a program called Future Builders. I think you could establish a program, teach some skill sets to those kids that aren't college-bound, rehab those houses. And it's of interest to the city, because the infrastructure's there, streets, water, power, web contacts. So they would benefit quickly by getting those houses back into a usable condition. Neighborhood would be improved, all that stuff.
Dale?
The answer is collaboration with the community about how funds are used. There were four hundred thousand dollars distributed this year. Two hundred and forty went to the Serenity House, and then they came in and said, "Gosh, we're going to close the doors." I was the one who made the motion that was approved. We allocated an additional fifty-five thousand dollars. The issue is, how many programs are being asked, are asking for money that don't have money? You know, we had over, almost a million dollars' worth of requests for that four hundred thousand dollars.
Thank you. We're now going to move to our candidates' two-minute closing statements, and we will reverse the order from their opening statements. And therefore, Mr. Wilson will go first, and you have two minutes.
Thank you, Vicky. Again, I'd just like to thank the League of Women Voters for allowing us to come here and gather tonight, and the library for hosting us. Over here, unfortunately, I realize, I have been a pretty active volunteer over in Port Angeles. I helped start a public access television station that is the first of its kind. And what we're doing there is creating an opportunity for people to tell their own stories in their own voices. We're also doing documentaries on the Discovery Channel, and Fishing on the West End, and the New Dungeon House. And one week after we got the New Dungeon House on television, we got a call from New Jersey saying, "Can we run this on our station out here?" So the programs that we put up promoting Clallum County, promoting the recreational and the business opportunities that are here, are going, and they're available on what they call the Peg Library, and anybody in the country can get them and use them. And so we may never know what the feedback is until somebody comes in and says, "I saw something on your television station, and I'm moving my business here." But I've worked with the television station, I've worked, we started the Port Angeles Historical Society for the sole purpose of restoring the historic fire hall that is in between the Carnegie Library, which has been completely restored, and the courthouse that's been completely restored. We had this black eye there. And the people with the peninsula, with the peninsula access, public access, and the historical society, we're working together to restore this building so there will be a proper studio for the television station, but also a media center downstairs. You can walk right in, and if you have the interest in learning how to do storytelling on videotape, we will give you the cameras, we'll give you the lighting, the microphones, and the editing equipment, so you can go out and create your own feature-length movie, or you can go out and just tell a story of a documentary that you want to do. So we want to also make this available to here in Forks, and we also would like them to spread it out to Squim, so that every community will have an opportunity to be able to tell their own story in their own voices.
Thank you. Mike, you have two minutes?
So I served multiple terms as your county commissioner. I'm very proud of my record. If elected again, I would do what I did in the past, plus probably a little more. Wednesdays, I typically was at the West End Business Group. I'd go down to La Push, I'd be back with the Chamber noon. I'd go to Nia Bay, come through Clallum Bay, CQ, and up in Joyce in the evening, a very predictable schedule for people who would call me. And if I couldn't meet with them on a Wednesday, I'd be out there on typically a Saturday. I love the West End. I think it's the best county commissioner district out of four thousand, two hundred and sixty. We have so many attributes out here. In fact, we were just on Second Beach most of the afternoon. So there's good reason why Good Morning America called it the most romantic beach in the United States. So I appreciate your vote, and if you have time, take the little green card, go to the website, mikedory.info. This handout tells you a little bit about my record, being trusted by other elected officials, governors, U.S. senators, others. And mostly the other county commissioners in the state, where at least a dozen different committees that I served on, whether it was broadband interoperable communications for law enforcement people, there's a lot of appropriation, subcommittees or advisory committees within the association of counties. So I was trusted, and I provided some leadership, and they honored me by representing so many groups on behalf of all the counties in the state of Washington. So I would be much more active commissioner on a lot of issues. I think I'm a pretty quick study. Again, by being trusted by governors, senators, I think I can bring more funding back to the state, back to the county for some of these programs that are hurting. So I intend to be active and be very astute as far as funding some of the programs that you feel have been underfunded, particularly out in the West End. And now that the charter's changed, so we're nominated in the primary and elected in the general, I think it's a serious deficiency that there's a lack of understanding of county-wide programs because of that change in the charter. And I would work to go back to the old system when the charter review comes up in two years.
Mr. Peach, two minutes closing?
I would also like to thank, thank you very much to the League of Women Voters. Seriously, I've been to a couple of these debates now, and the way that you manage your debates is very classy compared to, well, never mind. But there was at least one that was not. I thank everybody that's in the room for pausing and taking time to listen to the issues, because you care about your community. So do I. And what I hope you'll think about is, who is going to fit well with the current commission? It's an issue for you to give serious thought to. You know, everybody's entitled to an opinion, but how many people actually share the facts, the correct facts with you? Think about that, please, when you get ready to cast your ballot. You know, the simple fact of the matter is that sometimes people want you to believe what they believe. I have a very different approach. I focus on collaboration. I learn sometimes that my approach isn't the right approach. That's why I'm willing to change. I'm willing to be flexible. And an old paradigm is, no, do it my way. I'm so knowledgeable. I am an elitist. I can tell you how to do this. That doesn't cut it anymore. It really does not. You need to be able to listen to the situation that you're dealing with. And I can tell you for a fact that the commission is getting along a lot better than it has in a very long time. I get that from the employees. I get that from people that are in the industry, people that interact with the commissioners. But I also get it by observing the last couple of years of our previous commissioners' tour of duty. And there was quite a bit of vocal expression of, "I don't agree." You know, that lack of collaboration wastes a lot of time. It really does. Thank you.
Before we depart, there are several announcements that I want to make, and then you'll have a chance to thank them. I want you to remember that primary ballots will be mailed today, and so you should get them another day or two in your mailbox. Your marked ballot must be placed in a drop box or postmark no later than August seventh. And this year, ballots will have prepaid postage on them, so voters won't need to apply a stamp. Please remind your family, your friends, your neighbors to cast their votes as well. For those unable to be at our forum, tell them that it can be viewed on our website. And again, take your agenda home, because it has the website address on it. For those who have moved since the last election, organ need to register. July thirtieth is the last day to register in person at the Clallum County Auditor's Office in Port Angeles. I also want to tell you that the League of Women Voters of Washington State has developed a new resource that will help voters make important ballot decisions. Vote411.org is a nonpartisan online voter guide that offers balanced and relevant information on candidates and issues on voters' ballots. All candidates have been encouraged to post their answers to questions on issues facing their local communities. You can pick up one of these, or several, give them out to your friends and neighbors. I want to explain one further thing, though, that has confused some of us. And that is, going on that website right now, you won't find every candidate's responses, because right now, they are just focusing on those that have primary races. The candidates for the general election, their answers to the questions will be posted a little later. So don't just give it a one-shot try. Go at it several times as more and more information builds up on it.
Could you say the address again, please?
Pick up one of these.
Okay.
It's vote411.org. Also, please do visit our membership table, which is right back there by the hall, and consider joining our organization. We also welcome donations, and there's a jar there for that, because that's what finances our ability to continue to offer these forums. And we would really like to have some membership here in Forks. It would expedite providing more forums such as this if we had a core of members out here. Thank you all. Thank you for running for election. Thank you for taking time to be here with us.